Welcome, everyone. We are here at our regular council meeting for tonight, June the 5th. It is 6:03 PM. Can we get roll call, please? Mayor Bidball?
Here.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Here.
Councilmember Buckland?
Here.
Councilmember Cleveland?
Here.
Councilmember Cardoza?
Here.
Thank you. We will have Councilmember Buckland lead us in the invocation tonight and Councilor Vice Mayor Harris lead us in the pledge.
I feel bow your heads as I pray. Almighty Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all those that are gathered here tonight. We're truly blessed with your presence. We ask for your guidance and clear visions so the efforts of staff and council will be of benefit to those who live and work in this community. Tonight, we also remember our freedom and the right that we have to vote for those that will carry on in public service throughout not only our community, but our state and our nation. It's in your most blessed name that I pray. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
So tonight, we are going to start with a presentation from our planning commission. And we have Chairperson Daria Ali presenting. Well, I guess not.
Good evening, Mayor. City Councilmembers, Arnold Rodriguez Development Services Department. It's a pleasure this evening that I introduce the Chairperson of our Planning Commission, Chair Daria Ali. Just for the benefit of both the council and the community members here, our Planning Commission meeting considers land use entitlements and we meet on the second and fourth Wednesday of every month, right in this room at 6 o'clock. So if you ever want to join us, we would encourage you to come on down. Thank you. And I'll turn over to Daria.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I wanted to thank the City Council for inviting us to present this evening. It's an honor and it's also a special honor to have two former planning commissioners here on the City Council, our Mayor Preet Bidball and Sean Harris. So they have some experience with what I'm about to share with you. Okay, the role of the Planning Commission. We are delegated, we're a delegated authority delegated by the City Council. We're a primary entity through which land use entitlements are considered, items like zoning or use permits, and back in 2004, a general plan, which there will be a new one in the next few years. We operate through the adopted bylaws of the general plan. The Commission acts as an advisory board to the City Council on all development issues. We're a permanent committee comprised of seven individuals. Now, that does not mean that the seven individuals are permanent, but the committee is permanent. And any of you who might be interested in becoming a planning commissioner can watch for the opportunity to apply as there it does become available every couple of years several positions. We reapply when we want to continue with it. We're interviewed by the mayor and the vice mayor and then appointed by the mayor and the council. We assure when something comes before us that the general plan is being implemented by reviewing development projects on a case-by-case basis. We function as a decision-making body for projects, and in some cases, we make recommendations to the City Council and they make the decisions from there. Since January of 2017, we have had 16 meetings and worked on 20 projects, two workshops, and one zoning code text amendment, and one initiated text amendment. Each year, we joined the League of California Cities Planning Commission Training Conference, and this year, we were very pleased to have four planning commissioners attend on April 4th with Director Arnoldo Rodriguez. So Arnoldo kept us going, looking at architecture in the evenings when we weren't in conferences. We drove around and looked at planning, good planning and poor planning in the cities along the coast. We provided an opportunity to visit existing projects. We discussed urban design. At the conference, there are some great things that commissioners learn about. When you first come to a planning commission meeting, you wonder what CEQA is. You are just learning about what zoning code is because we're citizens. We're not trained professionals in this arena. So to go to that meeting, we learn valuable training. We work with urban and rural communities and in various meetings and conferences throughout the day to learn what's going on in other areas. So it's really a lot of fun. And one of the best things is how to run a meeting, and if you need some light comedy in the morning, you should join us there. Because there is a skill to running a meeting, as you all know. So on our to-do list are the bars and nightclubs ordinances we're looking at for primarily Pluma Street, the downtown business area, to create an area that will be more attractive, hopefully, in my mind, to young professionals coming back to this area. We are planning a drive-through workshop, and we're talking about fast food and looking at how other communities are looking at those dynamics because it does impact the culture of our community. The number of drive-throughs here, how does it compare to other areas that are similar in population or are similar to the city that we want to develop here? We're working on a truck terminal text amendment so that we won't have Highway 20 and 99 in the city become truck stops would be my hope, my personal hope. We're looking at sidewalks and gated subdivisions, the El Margarita Master Plan, and the Boge Stewart Master Plan. And that ends my presentation. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Daria. That was short and sweet. Speaking of commissions, before we go on to our public hearing, we do have a special meeting that's going to be held on June 12th. That's with all of our planning, or all of our commissions. So all of our commissioners will be in attendance, along with several of us. Council will be here and going over the goals and priorities of the council, as well as the city as a whole, so that the commissioners can look into how they're going to produce some strategic planning and goals of their own within each of the commissions to proceed forward with those goals and priorities of the council. So if any of you are open for that, that's June 12th at 6 o'clock here for anybody to attend. It's open to the public. All right, now we will move on to our public hearings. We have our water and wastewater rates that Diana Langley will speak on.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So the item before you tonight is the water and wastewater rates for fiscal year 1819. I provided a comprehensive presentation at the budget workshop on May 22nd. So my proposal tonight is to give you an abridged version unless it's council's preference that I give you the full presentation.
Abbreviated would be a good start.
All right. So with that in mind, the purpose of rates is to ensure adequate revenues in the water and wastewater enterprise funds. Those revenues allow us to cover operations and maintenance, debt service coverage, as well as capital projects. In 2016, council adopted a water and wastewater rate study. In June of 2016, after Proposition 218 process, those rates were approved. And when council adopted the ordinances for, the updated ordinances for the water and wastewater rates, they put in their language requesting to be able to review the rates prior to the July 1st implementation. So with that in mind, I will get into the proposed rates for fiscal year 1819. So the proposed water rates are here on the screen. The current rate for a one-inch water service is $32.58. We're proposing to increase that to $35.84. If you recall, through the 218 process, what was approved in terms of the baseline usage was less than what council has moved forward with. So for instance, for a one-inch service, what was approved through the 218 process was 11 HCF. In addition, for customers that exceed the baseline amount, there's a volumetric charge on top of that. We're proposing that that increases from $1.67 to $1.84. Here is a chart that shows the proposed rate as compared to the Proposition 218 approved rate. So through the 218 process, for a one-inch water service, the rate was $39.49. For fiscal year 1819, we are proposing $35.84. In addition, we're proposing a volumetric rate less than the 218 amount. The proposed wastewater rates are shown. So for instance, the current rate for a single family is $49.04. We're proposing that that increases to $52.96. And then it also impacts our industrial users as well as our septic haulers. So this is the first year that we are actually proposing to set the wastewater rates below the 218 amount. In the previous two years, council has set it at the 218 amount. So we're excited this year that we are able to recommend to actually set it below the 218 amount. So what does this mean for our average customer? So for a single-family dwelling that has a one-inch water service, they currently pay a total bill of $81.62 based upon their annual usage. That would increase to $88.80 under these proposed rates as compared to $93.44 through the, which was approved through the 218 process. So the recommendation for tonight is to conduct a public hearing, adopt a resolution setting the water rates below the 218 approved rates to become effective July 1st, 2018, and then also adopt a resolution to set the wastewater rates below the Proposition 218 approved rates, also effective July 1st. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you, Diana. We'll bring it to council for any questions for Diana. Nope. Okay. So at this time, we'll go ahead and open it for the public. For the public hearing for the proposed water and wastewater rates is now open. So if anybody would like to speak from the public and address the council on this issue, please step up to the podium and state your name and address. No? Okay. Public hearing is now closed. Back to the council for any questions or motion.
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have consideration of inclusion of the delinquent charges and penalties for water and wastewater services on the secured tax toll, and we have Robin presenting tonight.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. The Finance Department actively manages the city's utility receivables and pursues delinquent service charges within the limits allowed by state law. We consistently research new tools for successful collections. Our process includes the following efforts shown on the screen. We send out billing notice updates that are sent to both the customer's forwarding address, if we have one, and then the property owner, if that's a separate party. We transfer any balances due for a resident that may have moved to a different location within the city. So we'll move the balance due on an old account to a new account if they're still living here locally. We also use a collection agency. The problem with that is they receive 40% of the amount that's due to the city, and frankly, the collection rate isn't very good. We also pursue tax intercept through the Franchise Tax Board where we send them a list every year, and they'll intercept anybody's tax refund that owes the city money. So we try to explore many avenues for collection and reducing our bad debt accounts. The property assessments is an additional collection tool that we can utilize. There's an equity issue where non-paying customers cause their cost of service to be absorbed and paid, be paid by paying customers. So we try to collect from everybody that we can. Our original delinquency list that we began with a little over a month ago and sent notices out to included 69 accounts that totaled just under $43,600. We now have 51 accounts remaining totaling just under $33,000. We continue to receive payments from folks that we've been in contact with. In addition to that, if we receive notification that somebody has left at a location and moved, we of course don't hold the new property owner responsible. We can't place an assessment on our property where the ownership has changed recently. In addition to that, we've had several customers that have made payment arrangements with us where they typically pay about half of the balance due upfront and then make payment arrangements for the balance due. With that, I would like council to open the public hearing, and I'm available to answer any questions that you have.
Great. Thank you, Robin. So we'll bring it back to council for any questions for Robin at this time? Yeah.
Robin, on, I was reviewing these accounts. On commercials is one thing, but on these residential accounts, you know, the minimum monthly rate's approximately $82 a month. There's a few on here that are $1,000 plus.
Those very large balances are for...
Is there any reason, because at two months, it's, you know, under $200 plus penalties and stuff like that. Is there any reason why, you know, that we got up to, you know, $1,000 plus on a few of these?
The reason they got so higher, these are typically sewer-only accounts, and they know we're not going to come out and dig up the roadway and cut and cap the sewer, so they don't, they just don't pay us. And by putting it as an assessment lien on the property, it will enforce, enforce payment.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions for Robin at this time? No? So public hearing is now open for consideration on the inclusion of the delinquent charges and penalties for the water and wastewater services on the secured tax roll. If there's anyone in the public that would like to come up and speak on this issue, please step up to the podium and state your name and address. I do have a speaker card on this item. Colwant Minhas. Go ahead and go up to the podium, please.
My name is Colwant Minhas, and my house for listed for sale, and it was closed, nobody was there, and I got a bill for $927. So I tried to talk to them, they would not do anything, make a payment. So I want to see something we can be done.
Yeah, we would just have you go ahead and make an appointment with Robin to sit down and go over your bill with her or her staff to see what they can do and help you out.
They said we can't do anything. You go to the council.
Yeah, it's going to have to go back. If that's what the bill was...
Because nobody in the house.
Robin, is there a procedure for them to notify us?
Absolutely. We ask that folks notify us when tenants move out or if you were living there and you moved out.
Nobody was there. The house was empty for six months.
Okay, we can take a look at that. We have one other property owner, let me get a little closer to my mic if you don't mind. One other property owner contacted us in a similar situation, and we were able to verify that there was no consumption on the account. We were agreeable to reversing the charges off the account from the point that there was no consumption forward because clearly no one had been in that residence and they weren't using the services. So if we see that that's the case, we can definitely work with you, but that's not typically the case for these accounts.
Okay. So it's going to be a one-on-one exception.
Absolutely, yes. I would be happy to meet with him.
That would be great. So she'll go ahead and sit down with you and go over your account.
You write down your address, and I'll contact you tomorrow.
Okay.
Can I borrow your pen, Tara?
Address or phone number?
Address and phone number would be great, then I can contact you.
I have a question for Robin.
Okay. Why don't we bring it back right now on this item?
I would ask City Council to please consider adopting the resolution and giving me the authority to work with him and take a look at the consumption history and see if we can work something out.
Exactly that.
Thank you.
Pardon me?
Exactly that motion. But Councilmember Buckland has a question for you.
I have a question, and this is regarding rental properties. And when an individual comes in and rents property, they have to list who the property owner is prior to their shut-off date. The city also notifies the property owner of any outstanding balance. Am I correct on that?
Do we before shut-offs, Katrina?
Do we before shut-offs, but before, when there's a closeout on a...
The closeout.
Yes.
They send, they forward that?
Yes, we do.
In a timely manner so they can still take it from...
By the time the final bill goes to the tenant?
Right.
And also goes to the owner.
All right. Thank you very much.
I just wasn't sure if it was before shut-off because typically we'll shut the customer off and try to get payment from who's residing there using the service.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public that would like to speak at this time? Nope? Okay. Public hearing is now closed. Bring it back to council for further questions or motion.
I move that we adopt staff's recommendation.
Along with the motion to go over...
Along with the motion to assist the individual.
I'll second that.
Okay. And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? All right. Thank you, Robin.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next item is consideration of the 2018-19 Community Development Block Grant Action Plan. So we have Mr. Rodriguez.
Good evening again. The item before you this evening is the city's annual action plan for the community block development program for fiscal year 2018-2019. The fiscal year being, of course, running, we're beginning July 1st and running through June, the end of June of 2019. So for background purposes, the city of Yuba City is, we are an entitlement city which is based on our demographics and our needs as defined by HUD. The purpose of the program, or the intent, is to provide safe, decent, and affordable housing for persons of low income, and it's also to serve as an economic engine for both low and for moderate income persons in our community. Every year, a staff comes before the City Council on three occasions. However, there's only two action items. There's the action item this evening, which is the action plan. What the action plan does is that it articulates the goal, kind of goals, and it also allocates funding for the fiscal year of the upcoming year. And then every year around September, city staff brings back a CAPER report which identifies the programs that the city engaged in for the previous year. And then also, as a standard of practice, we've been coming before the council in around March, the first week of March this year was March the 3rd, where we identify the program or we discuss the program, and we also receive feedback from the council to ensure that as we're going through the process and we are making recommendations to council that we have a clear understanding of what the goals of the council are. So again, so as we're reviewing them, as we're ranking them, we are meeting the goals as set forth by the council. In terms of how we allocate funds, the city does have some discretion. However, within that discretion, there are some caps which I will discuss. But again, activities generally include housing, so we're property investment, economic opportunities. And again, the bottom does identify those caps. So in terms of program administration, we have a maximum cap of 20% and public services is 15%. You can go below the threshold, you just obviously cannot exceed it. So in terms of communication, we are in constant communication with HUD. One of the things that they've emphasized to us over the past two years is to attempt to consolidate some of the programs simply to ensure that we do not have redundant programs or services being provided in our community. So with that, we do go through a public process. We do have a 30-day public notice where we publish in the newspaper, we send out direct mailings to two different service providers in our community. We also hold a workshop which was held February the 15th of this year. We came before the City Council on March the 3rd of this year, and then we had our final ranking, which would, which occurred on March the 19th by city staff. So in the fiscal year that we're in right now, and I apologize, I should say 2017-2018, staff received $586,000. The extremely positive note is that we are allocated, we are being allocated $650,000 this year. So that's a relatively large increase of over $63,000. So that's very positive news. For a number of years there, it was questionable. We received some relatively minor increases. I think there was even talks about decreasing it. So an increase of $63,000 is great for our community. We received a total of nine applications requesting a total of $745,000. So obviously, we unfortunately cannot fund all of the applications. With that being said, historically, we would always receive up to 17 or 18 applications. But the reason that we've lowered the number of applications again is because we've encouraged different programs to consolidate the programs, and now instead of receiving where historically we would receive seven or eight applications, we received one application, but it's all the different programs partnering, which again, that was at the encouragement of HUD. So with that, staff is recommending that we allocate 20% for the administration of the program, which is roughly $130,000. That goes for staff training, travel, to ensure compliance with HUD. So it's not only this year, but then there's also, there's ongoing monitoring for previous years that we allocate staff time to. Public services has a 15% cap, and historically, the city's largely geared those programs towards helping people that are homeless or the homeless population. So again, the cap on that would be $97,500 and a half. In total requests, there's approximately $108,000. Unfortunately, we simply cannot fund the full amount requested again because of the 15% cap. And the overhead identifies the five programs again. So there's five different programs, however, they've all come in under the larger umbrella of one application. And then the remaining 65% of the funds, City Council does again have the discretion. Staff is recommending that Public Works receive $150,000 largely for sidewalk improvements. There's an ADA pickleball court of $81,000. The Regional Housing Authority for roof and window replacement on two different sites of roughly $50,000. And also, a owner-occupied housing rehab program, which would, there's an application process. We're recommending allocating $100,000 to that program. The free program, which assists disabled persons, approximately $15,000, then Habitat for Humanity for an exterior home repair program of $25,000, quite, so nearly $26,000 for a total of $422,000. So with that being said, staff this evening is recommending that the City Council adopt a resolution approving the 2018-2019 Annual Action Plan, which again allocates roughly $650,000, and to also authorize staff to submit all documents to HUD as necessary. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Great. Thank you. Bring it back to council for any questions?
No questions, but to the mayor, I can remember serving on the, or being at the U.S. Homeless Consortium, and one of the difficulties they had at the time was exactly them competing against each other for this money through the city, and they were trying to figure out how do we not hurt each other by trying to take too much of this? And this is the mandate that has come down to do it this way is basically, you know, gently force them to go in as a group, which they wanted to and they were trying to, and trying to figure out a way to not compete against each other. And this is, it's a great thing that it is now going that way. So they just, and it draws them closer to work together, so that's a great thing that it's done that way now.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Nope? Okay. We will go ahead and open this to the public. Public hearing is now open on consideration of the 2018-19 Community Block Grant Action Plan. Are there any folks in presence today that would like to speak? Nope? Okay. We will bring it back to council for a motion.
To the mayor. I'll make staff's recommendation.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Great. Thank you. Next, we have a bid opening on chemical purchase through the Bay Area Chemical, BACC, formal bid and city bid. bid and city bid, and we have Spencer.
Good evening, Mayor Dibboll and members of the council. My name is Spencer Morrison of the Finance Department. Tonight, I bring before you the chemical purchases staff report for the 2018-19 fiscal year. The water and wastewater plants use a variety of chemicals to make potable water and water that can be legally discharged into the Feather River. Additionally, the Gauche Aquatic Park uses chemicals to keep our swimming community healthy in water that is clean and also looks appealing. The first seven chemicals on the list here are bid by the Bay Area Chemical Consortium, a collective of 66 agencies working together for better chemical pricing through one large formal bid. Again, this year, the consortium did not bid liquid oxygen nor calcium hydroxide or lime slurry. So staff put these two chemicals out to bid, and we received a slightly lower price on liquid oxygen compared to last year, but no bids on lime slurry. So the current-year lime slurry contract with LOIST of North America has a one-year extension built in with a 5% increase on the former price of $614.25 per dry ton. And this is the recommendation, being in the best interest of the city. So staff's recommendation is to award the formal bid contracts for the period of July 1 through June 30, 2019, based on the lowest responsive bid in all categories, and by extension of a current contract, as it is in the best interest of the city. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Spencer. Does council have any questions, or what is their wish on this one?
I move to approve.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Great. Thank you, Spencer. All right. And we have our section on public communication. So you are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on the lists, items listed on this agenda when they are called. Public comments on the items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express their opinions of the group. We do have a couple of written requests at this time, and so we'll go over those. Are there any folks outside of the written request that would like to speak at this time? Nope? Okay. So we have Dale McDowell.
Mayor Dibboll and council members, I'd like to make a couple of comments here on the water loss that the Water Department says we lose a billion gallons of water a day. Comes out, what, 365 million gallons that goes for the year? An indication is that part of that cost of that is going to be borne back by the rate payers. But the amount that we lose needs to be verified. All we have is from somebody that made a study and said, well, yeah, this is how much water we lose. So you made one adjustment or one correction for recalibrated your meters, and you find 100 million, over 100 million gallons of water there. That's about 30% of that. So what we need to do is to verify what our actual losses are. So are all the meter connections, all the water connections in the city all have meters? That's one place we could look at. And then we need to verify actually how much water we're losing. Maybe we're not losing that much water. So just think that we should do a little further study on that, and not just, rather than to look after, just pass the cost of that on to the rate payers.
Okay. Thank you, Dale. Appreciate your comments. Next, we have Pat Miller.
Good evening, mayor and councilmen. I came, come before you tonight to urge you to look very closely at the, at putting a potential tax increase on the ballot. And my concern is that the citizens of Yuba City, Sutter County have assessed themselves to fix our levies, and we're going to pay that assessment for the next 25 years. Levy District 1 and 9 are talking about joining together and forming another assessment district and increasing our assessment there to maintain our recently rehabilitated sections of levy, which, not sure why they have, they have a lot more money, but that's in the works. Our state government continues to tax us. The housing prices and rental prices in this area are going up. So the cost to the citizens is increasing, and I would really encourage you to consider that very closely. And I know that the potential increase is being driven by the pension costs. We currently have an unfunded liability of over $73 million, and the cost per individual, how much out of each dollar they're paid is going up also. And tonight, you're going to approve, I think, over $1 million for the rest of this year and next year in increased costs. And I didn't look back to see how much you have done in the past. Each time you do that, of course, that increases the pension costs for the city. And I know the city is short of funds for other things, but something needs really to be done about the pensions. And I hope the organization of city governments is looking into that, and county governments, and the state, so that that can be reduced and we can get back on an even keel here. So think about it very carefully. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Next, we have Rick Jimmerson.
Good evening, and thank you. I just became aware this afternoon about a meeting that's going to take place at the Planning Commission next week, and I wanted to address that. And so, since it was late, and I've only spent about four months researching all of this, I put that together in a manner that I'm going to have to read it, so I'm going to apologize that I won't be able to make eye contact as I go through. Next Wednesday, at the Planning Commission Recycling Industries' request to extend their permit is on the agenda. This is an attempt to piggyback off their current permit to increase the volume and type of waste they may take. Few people understand that extending this permit allows them to bypass serious environmental and other reviews of the new project. I, along with many other residents, have many concerns regarding a use permit extension request by recycling industries. I have been told or understand through our nodal that rubber stamping extensions of permits is a common practice. I ask why? Because after a four-year period of time, every permit should be reviewed to see if there are changes to be considered. The approval of this permit raises many questions regarding its being approved the first time. Mitigated environmental studies in this type of facility are not common and perhaps unheard of. Recycling industries have not acted on the permit in the last four years, and by approving an extension, they are actually attempting to increase tonnage and type of waste allowed. This is not in the scope of the project's submitted cover page. It seems that the planning department allows people to file what I would consider false information on project's scope. In my industry and all others, that type of submission would be considered fraudulent when signed. They have filed a new use permit, which would supersede the UP 12-01, and have outlined a proposal to expand their facility from three to four acres, increase the amount of materials that they could accept from 100 tons per day to 100, from 100 tons per day to 300 tons per day. That's an increase of more than 6,000 pound, tons a month. It'd be a removal of any limitations to putrid material. Putrid is what it sounds like smelling. And a removal of any limitations on the type of delivery, which would include commercial. Environmental traffic, fire, and quality of life issues and concerns need to be considered on every application. Each applicant should meet the same requirements, and there were obviously some that were bypassed when this permit was issued four years ago. To not submit it to close examination will confirm that not only were people not doing their job four years ago, I believe that's not necessary that they're doing it now. Okay? And also, I understood that this type of thing would allow, where the public would not be able to have any input, whether with the commission or at a council meeting. And I find that to be really hard to understand as a citizen. So I'm here this evening to let you know this is an important issue, and I want to be certainly aware of the ramifications that will result if this permit extension is approved. And I believe that by stating the facts and concerns for you to examine here tonight, you and I are not violating the intent of Mr. Gale's email to you on March the 26th that encouraged you to not become overtly involved in this issue, as it may lead to a need to recuse yourself should it come to a council vote. I spent quite a few months gathering the material. I have all the documents from not only here, the county, the state. It's all in my possession at my office. I'll be glad to go over it with anyone at any time. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. And those are all of the written requests that I have for tonight. So we will now move on to our consent calendar. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to that, this time, that the council votes on the motion unless members of the city council, staff, or public request any particular items to be discussed or removed from consent calendar for individual action. Anybody need to remove or discuss?
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Madam mayor, just as a point of clarification, I know that the two of you need to recuse yourself on, on...
If there's no discussion, we'll recuse ourselves from the voting process.
And yes, if there's no discussion, you don't have to leave the room. Just make the announcement that you're recusing yourself.
Right. Right. So anyone like to discuss any of the items separately, or... Nope? Okay. Do we have a motion?
I already provided motion.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
And I need to recuse myself from the voting.
As do I.
On for number 14.
Is there, is there anybody else?
It's just the two of us.
I didn't hear, I didn't hear show. Okay. Thank you.
All right. So the consent calendar items are approved with the exception of myself and Vice Mayor Harris recusing on item number 14.
Can we, we need a vote?
We have a motion and second.
We have a motion and second.
We need a vote.
And why don't we go ahead and do roll call vote real quick?
You want the roll call on the entire consent calendar?
Yeah.
Okay.
And just...
Okay. Councilmember Buckland?
Yes.
Councilmember Cleveland?
Yes.
Councilmember Cardosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes, for recusing on item 14.
Okay. And Mayor Dibboll?
Yes, with the exception of number 14, I will recuse myself.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Just for extra clarity there. All right. We have a couple of general items here. We have the Public Employees Union Local 1 MOU. Natalie.
Good evening, mayor, city council members. I am pleased to be here to present the Local 1 Memorandum of Understanding, MOU. We have Dave Collender here tonight, who was, is the president of Local 1. Dave, do you want to raise your hand? And then also Ron Slaven, who is also with Local 1. I just want to thank them both, and the Local 1 members who are not here this evening, who are at the bargaining table, for all the energy and dedication that they put towards this contract. So I think that's really important. There's a lot of people involved in this. So just in brief here, I wanted to just go over the Local 1 MOU terms. We have been meeting since, no, November, April of 2017. Some of the highlights include the one-time distribution, the 2% ongoing base rate adjustment, nine-step, which is actually next fiscal year, which is, you know, in July, the nine-step salary schedule for new hires, and that's from a five-step salary schedule. We also have a new salary schedule for difficult-to-fill utilities positions. Those positions are positions that are technical in nature, and some of them require certification. And also, it maintains a comprehensive management rights clause. There are some other items as well. It expands the city's tuition reimbursement program, and it also increases the compensation time off from 60 hours to 80, but also eliminates the cash-out provision for compensation time. And there's an addition of some certification pay and increases bilingual pay. So as you can see, it's a comprehensive memorandum of understanding. I am pleased that we are here tonight with you. And so at this time, I would like to recommend that the memorandum of understanding is approved by city council, and as well as the supplemental appropriation that is in the staff report. At this time, I will take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Natalie. Council have any questions for Natalie at this time?
Through the mayor.
Yes.
Natalie, is the one-time payment to employees, is that a perizable amount of money?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And, but it's not an ongoing expense when it comes to perks other than in retirement? Am I correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Any other questions or a motion?
Mayor?
Yes.
I'll make a motion for Public Employees Local Union Memorandum of Understanding.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Great. Thank you, Natalie. And you're going to stay?
Yes, I am.
For the next few.
We have the Yuba City firefighters local 3793 MOU. Yes. This is another one, local 3793, which is the Firefighters Association, another agreement that I am very pleased to be standing before due presenting tonight. This is, we have been meeting with fire since around the same timeframe as Local 1, once in May 2017. This is also a comprehensive negotiations with the fire union. Highlights of this MOU include the one-time distribution, 2% ongoing base wage increase, modification of the work period from 28 days to 14 days. The other FLSA provisions are maintained. It also has the comprehensive management rights clause, and it establishes an updated model for station and shift assignments. So that is the current contract. I will, at this time, I would recommend approving the MOU and the supplemental appropriation. At this time, I will take any questions that you may have.
Okay. Thank you again. Any questions for Natalie from council? Nope? Motion?
Through the mayor.
Yes.
Like to make a motion for the MOU for Yuba City Firefighters Local 3793.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Great. Thank you. And Natalie, Fire Management MOU.
Number three. Here we go. Fire Management Letter of Understanding. Fire Management is a small group. It's made up of four members, and these four members were all recently promoted. There's a fire marshal and then three battalion chiefs. So this is, was minimally negotiated. However, we will be negotiating soon with them again. So one of the intent of this agreement was to get in language that next year's negotiations is to discuss the FLSA terms. The other terms is the one-time distribution and then the 2%, whoops, base rate, 2% base rate increase. That's in the coming fiscal year, which is in July. So at this time, I would recommend approving the Letter of Understanding for the Fire Management and along with the supplemental appropriation. I will take any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you again, Natalie. Back to the council for any questions of Natalie, or a motion?
Well, through the mayor, I'm on a roll. Staff's recommendation for the Fire Management Letter of Understanding.
Great. Do we have a second?
I'll do a second and make the comment that it's actually kind of nice to have this unit, because we have the people in place to do the leadership that we've needed for a while. So it's great to actually have that happen. So that is a second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Great. Thank you. Next, we have the Police Officers Association and the Police Sergeant Side Letters. Natalie?
Yes. So this is the, as you said, mayor, this is the POA and Police Officers Association and Police Sergeant Side Letters. The POA MOU and Sergeant LOU... The POA MOU and Sergeant LOU was approved by council on February 20th, 2018. When the contract was being implemented, there was some housekeeping items that came up, particularly with the education incentive pay, which required some clarification, and that is why we are back here before you tonight to seek that clarification on those side letters that's required to implement the contract. The clarification for the POA side letter is on the slide here. For the sergeants, there is a little bit difference here. It does require a retroactive calculation. It is a minor adjustment, but it is to, not just in language, there's also some, a minor supplemental appropriation that's associated with this as well. It does not, neither of these side letters changes the intent that was negotiated at the table. It's merely for clarification's sake. So at this time, I would recommend approving these two side letters, one for the POA and one for the sergeants, and also recommend approving the supplemental appropriation associated with the sergeant's side letter. So at this time, I'll turn it over for any questions or comments you may have.
Thank you, Natalie. Any questions for Natalie from council?
No, but I'll break the roll that Manny was on. I'll move to approve staff's recommendations.
I'll second it.
Oh. Do we have a tie?
Choose. I second it.
Arm wrestle.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Great. Thank you. Next, we have the First Level Manager Side Letter. Natalie?
Yes. Thank you. So this is, like you said, this is the First Level Manager Side Letter. First Level Management was the first bargaining unit to have their contract approved by city council. Sometimes when that happens, we tend to see housekeeping items or operational issues develop as the other bargaining units negotiate. So some of these items that have come up for other units, we then evaluate them, their impact on the First Level Management. So some of the highlights of this side letter include adding shift differential for the operators that are working at the plants when they're working 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM. Includes some standby pay for the First Level Management in animal services. It also addresses the difficult-to-fill utilities positions that I talked about also with Local One, and it implements some dispatcher education pay to the communications center coordinator. It also clarifies water distribution cert pay. So at this time, I would recommend approving the First Level Management Side Letter and along with the supplemental appropriation. At this time, I'll take any questions or comments you may have.
Looks like this is your last one.
Move for approval of recommended action.
I'll second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Great. I think you're done, Natalie.
Thank you very much. Thank you all.
All right. Next, we have Robin to talk about the adoption of the city of Uba City's fiscal year of 2018-19 operating and capital budgets and also for 2018-19 appropriations limit.
Good evening again. Tonight's presentation related to the budget adoption will be the highest level overview of the city's budget with a focus on the general fund since we had a very detailed budget workshop on May 22nd with many more charts and graphs. That full presentation is available on the CAFERS and Budget section of the finance page of the city's website. So I would encourage any members of the public that are interested in learning more about the city's budget to take a look at that fairly lengthy presentation on our general fund. If there's any questions or comments, I'm always available by phone or by appointment to discuss it with folks. That said, after the high-level overview tonight, my focus will be on the policy-level decisions that I'm requesting your consideration of and the budget resolutions presented before you. This is a summary of the city's revenues for the general fund. It includes 10 years of actual historical results, the fiscal year 18 projected, and the 19 proposed budget. You can see that the proposed revenues for fiscal year 19 are expected to decline slightly compared to those for fiscal year 18. That's due specifically to the expiration of the SAFER grant. So I wanted to point that out. Our revenues aren't actually going down. It's grant revenue that we won't be receiving when the grant expires. This is the historical sales tax revenues of the city. They were higher in fiscal year 16 due to one-time funds received from the elimination of the triple flip at the state. Other than that, sales tax have grown steadily since fiscal year 2010. In this year's projected budget, we increased a sales tax at a production level of 3%. And this doesn't include the net expected offset amount of $460,000 anticipated to be paid to Sutter County under the terms of the Master Tax Exchange Agreement. I'm showing sales tax and property tax separately because there are two highest revenue sources for the general fund. Combined, they make up 63% of our revenues. This is a similar slide for property tax. It shows you what they've done over time. What I have projected in next fiscal year's budget is an increase of 4.3%. This is a summary of the city's general fund expenditures. The gold color is salaries and benefits. The darker gold color is the material supplies and services budgets. The difference between the total revenues projected of $42.4 million and the expenditures of $42.1 million is our budget surplus of $301,000. This is only the second year the city's had a surplus on a budget basis since fiscal year '09. I know this is a busy slide, but I want people in the public and here tonight to see this. It's an estimate of our CAL PERS costs that are going up, most certainly, due to that unfunded liability that Pat talked about earlier tonight. The purple line was our projections in 2014. Then the dark blue line on the very top showing that we were peaking out at about $12.75 million were our estimates from 2015. The green liner are our most recent projections, a little bit better, still an increase of our PERS cost going up to about $11.5 million. The surplus policy discussions that I've included in the proposed budget resolutions for tonight, taking into consideration the surplus that's expected from fiscal year 17-18, we project about $2.3 million in savings from vacant positions throughout the city's general fund. Of that, we will need about $113,600 to maintain our 15% healthy cities reserve. After that, setting aside 10% of the negative development impact fee funds for police and fire. Police vehicle purchases included in the fiscal year 18-19 budget that we were short on cash, available in our vehicle replacement fund, $384,500, leaving available $1,407,000 estimated. That staff is recommending we split equally between the pension stabilization trust and the general unallocated CIP fund for future projects. And lastly, I have the city's five-year financial forecast that shows, based upon our CAL PERS increases, we're anticipating that we will go into a deficit position again in fiscal year 23, excuse me, 21. And our PERS costs are increasing, expected at $923,000 for fiscal year 21, $808,000 for fiscal year 22, and $701,000 in fiscal year 23. So we keep updating our PERS projections every chance we get when we get new information from PERS. Our projections are only as good as the most recent information we've received from CAL PERS. We will definitely be monitoring our fiscal health in order to achieve sustainability on a long-term basis. This is something that we look at regularly. I've got a couple of different fiscal models that I use for the city, and I update them typically twice a year for the general fund. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have. I know that this is a very, very high-level overview. I think I spent probably 45 minutes to an hour talking about just the general fund the other night. So, thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Back to the council for any questions, comments for Robin? Or a motion?
I'll make a comment through the mayor. And, and first, I think our finance department does an amazing job in keeping this council advised of what's going on an ongoing basis. And certainly, Robin, you're the leader of that organization, and it's helpful for us. And to look at the historic data and see where we've come from, where we've been, we've been spending more than, than what we were taking in for quite a few years, and then to see, you know, the, the current trend, and then seeing that, that we could go be below that line again. I think that, given the conservative forecasting that, that goes into this, I don't think there's a reason to panic, not yet. And as this city continues to grow and, and we see some of the new businesses becoming involved, whether it be hotels and other structures that are coming into town, I think that that gives us great optimism that, that we're going to be able to move through this. And certainly, there are concerns when it comes to CAL PERS. We don't have a lot of control over that. That's the unfortunate part. But keeping us, you know, well-advised of what's going on, I think has, has been helpful over the time. And certainly, to end a year or to look at a year with projected surplus is certainly, it's a blessing. So thank you to, to you and your staff.
If I might, I've got a couple of my staff members here tonight. Lynn Hale, our accountant, and Spencer Morrison, my accounting manager. They're just part of what I consider a very phenomenal team. And the department heads, my peer group that I work with, they watch their purchase orders and their purchasing on a daily basis. So I've got a lot of help in putting together this information for you. Thank you.
Like we say, takes a village, right?
Absolutely.
But thank you for all of the hard work that you all put in there.
And with that, I'd move staff's recommendation.
Through the mayor, there's a couple of comments, and it's, I guess, similar to Councilmember Buckland. But you can only take what monies you know that's going to be coming in and not the hypothetical. Even though we know that we've got certain businesses coming in, changes going on, and there's been a very strong effort of this council, I know for sure, to increase that revenue base, based upon bringing new jobs, new businesses, and making sure that they're strong and stable. So while you do have a deficit coming theoretically as it is now, but the, we know that you're always very conservative, and you don't count your chickens before they hatch or even before the eggs even there. So I'm, I'm confident that if we continue the path that we have been pushing, that that little green line will no lo, will not be below that at all, and that we will continue to be fiscally stable and not have to even think about panicking in any way. So I think we have a great path moving forward.
You pay me so you don't have to panic. I will always do my best to bring forth a green line that exceeds the red line.
Yep. And it prompts us also to work harder at decisions when we see that and go, there's no way we're going to let it do that. So we do work harder because of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will second the motion.
So we have a motion and a second. Any additional comments or... All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. Great. Thank you, Robin.
You.
Okay. We have, oh, it's me. We had youth commission vacancies that we were looking to fill. We had a very long list of applications to go through. So Vice Mayor Harris and myself did interviews, and we were here until about 8:00 to go through all of the lists of the students that applied. And we are happy to announce we have selected Isabel Smith, who was an alternate in the past. She is now one of our permanent commissioners. Joanna Jarvis will continue. John Crager will also continue, and Samir Gupta will continue. Our new commissioners, yeah, Samir was hilarious. Sean Sandu will be our new youth commissioner, and Matt Biggins will be our alternate commissioner. So they are getting ready to be our new additions and bring in their creative thinking and help out with new programs. So we're very excited. And what a wonderful group of kids who applied. All of them were very, very talented in their own way. Some of them were a little too young to be on the commission, so we will be advising that we up the age, and we'll look at that. But they were all very, very talented, and they are going to do some great things, and we hope to keep them in our city. So with that being said, we... I'm sorry. We don't have them because they're doing their background check until we finalize that. We did do additional commission interviews, and that was for the personnel board, although we made our selection because we're going through the approval process with background checks and so forth. We will not make that an official announcement until all of that is complete. And so now we will move on to city council reports.
Madam Mayor, technically, the council should approve the recommendation.
Okay. The youth commissioners, let's go ahead and make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve them and make a comment that if they're even half as exciting and involved as the last year and a half or two, it's a very dynamic group. It's been, they've innovated, innovative and tried new things, and they are true leaders in the community, even as youth. And it's exciting to see that.
Yes. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Awesome. Okay. Now it's official. All right. Councilmember Buckland?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of meetings that I attended. And first, the budget review. Though it was a long meeting, it was well-attended by the public. The input that went in during that meeting was certainly helpful to, to hear that, and, and I appreciate, again, the, the members of the public that, that show up and continue to be involved in their city. This, this city belongs to them. It's not something that, that any one individual owns, but it's the collective body and, and certainly need to be involved. As SECOG's representative to CalCOG, the only representative to CalCOG from, from SECOG, I was able to attend our last meeting last week and during the normal course of discussion, talking about how the, the state body feels on the SB1 effort to, or the, the effort to repeal SB1, knowing that it could affect transportation funding and certainly understanding Pat's comments earlier, that, that the state taketh and keepeth a lot of money. But that, as Governor Brown said a long time ago, I want to return local control to the municipal entities and the counties. What that was, was code for, I'm going to take all of their money. You guys figure out what you guys are going to do. And, and certainly, that discussion continues to cycle around the SB1 discussions, and, and certainly, we'll be finding out shortly, you know, in the period of time, whether that repeal effort will take foothold. Also, strong discussions on Proposition 69. I'll, I'll tell you later. I'll tell you now. The, the, the guess was a week ago that, that this was going to pass in a rather overwhelming fashion here in the state of California. So we'll see how, how that, how that worked out. And then a large discussion on the effects of a proposition coming forward to change the state constitution on supermajority vote for state and local revenue. Again, Pat, this is something that you may be wanting to look at. It's going to require a two-thirds vote by the state legislature to build increasing taxes, fees, or, or any other thing that they guise as a fee that, that may be a fee or user tax. That also will apply to local jurisdictions. But also, the, the issue at hand is this is going to be on the November ballot and certainly could affect how the, how many municipal and county governments are going to operate in the future, as this has a retroactive to January 1 clause in it. So if someone even pushed forward with a local revenue measure, and at the same time the state constitution changed in the same vote, that may be a mute vote by locals. But the two-thirds threshold is, is pretty hard to get to, and this is for... But the 2/3s threshold is pretty hard to get to, and this is for any measure defined or undefined to go to general fund. So this is something that I think still bears a lot of discussion. Certainly, our community being slightly more conservative probably will want to weigh in on this issue as we move forward. And again, as one of the conservatives sitting on a large state panel at CalCOG, I always carry that more conservative voice forward as a representative of our region to include Sacramento. Upcoming, we have a SECOG meeting that, actually, I asked this thing to be set up so all of our elected officials could attend. This would be school board members, anyone that's been elected to be able to understand more of the role of SECOG and what SECOG can do to benefit our, the Yuba-Sutter area. So it'll be county supervisors and we're hoping planning commissioners are able to come. School board members, anyone that's been elected that potentially could tap into funding sources available through SECOG. It'll be June 1st at the New Earth Market at the Harvest Room.
21st.
June 21st. What did I say?
1st.
Oh, I just left out the 2. 21st.
Going backwards.
It's written right here, so. 4 to 6. 4 to 6. And the public is welcome to be able to come to this. So I would encourage members of the public to stop by, engage your elected officials, and ask them questions about SECOG because I'm going to bet that half of them won't know the answer until they show up at this meeting. So, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thursday, June 21st.
From 4:00 to 6:00 PM, New Earth Market Harvest Room. It's on the north side of New Earth Market.
Councilmember Cordoza.
Alrighty, we'll start off with meetings. I attended the Regional Housing Authority, Yuba-Sutter Transit Authority meeting, the Northern Sacramento Valley Regional Water Board Planning Commission meeting. Also had the honor of attending the Storm Water Resources Plan Workshop. Seeing what's coming to us in the future. Right, Spencer? Chamber events. We had three the last three weeks. I was only able to attend two of them because we had our budget meeting last week. So I attended ribbon cutting for the day spa. And also, the Marysville Youth and Civic Center is reopened. So they have that for the youth in Marysville. For community events, it's been three weeks since our last council meeting. So I'll make it quick and easy since we're going to be doing some things here later on tonight. I had the privilege and the honor to attend 25 community events in the last three weeks. So thank you for all the citizens of the community, and I appreciate it. And that's it for me for tonight.
Thank you. We've got Councilmember Cleveland.
Thank you very much. Let's see, May 24th, Byke County Homeless Services Program, which is the regional team. I sat in under that. Both of the actual selected members were indisposed and unable to be there. I attend and had some very good discussion on the regional approach to homelessness. And they have some good solutions that are moving forward, and so looking forward to that. Federal River Air Quality Management District, that has to do with all the air quality and gases and things and burning and things. Intended that actually yesterday. The budget review, what a comprehensive budget review. We found out that how, I'm going to say just how well we're doing on our finances right now, especially compared to some other cities that are going to be going into crisis because of CalPERS lowering their discount rate and artificially increasing our costs to the citizens, at least their taxes and stuff. And so we have different, in our budgets, we found out we have different methods how to smooth that over, the findings that we have to make sure that it doesn't cause us financial hardship. Also, I actually cooked for the Yuba-Sutter Senior Breakfast yesterday morning. 350 seniors, pancake, sausage, and at their cafeteria, we cooked for them. Each of the schools have a breakfast every year like that. And I guess tomorrow is River Valley, and I still have the griddle, so I've got to get them over there at 5:45 in the morning for them to use them. Attended Yuba-Sutter Transit meeting. Some good things are happening there. Going over to electronic and exchanging between Sacramento and Sutter County and Yolo County. So everybody's starting to work together in a way to where it's much more efficient. Then got a notification today on a bill called SB 1302, which is being called the Forced Cannabis Delivery Bill. I do sit on the League of California Cities Environmental Quality Committee, and there's a lot of concerns about the environmental quality of growing cannabis in the mountains and the different things and the effects that it has on the environment. But this one here is actually, they're going to force all the cities and counties to deliver. Take away from what was Prop 64 put in there was to not force us. Well, this one here is a bill that's going to go in now that they're trying to say, well, you know, the state citizens voted that they liked it that way. Well, we're going to now bypass that and pass a bill that's going to force you to deliver cannabis in your community to allow it. So that's coming up. So I just got notification on it. So it's kind of out in the public for the staff and everyone also. They might have already seen it, but council members know. And so that is happening. Other than that, I will be at Sacramento for the League of California Cities meeting this Thursday to discuss environmental quality issues and other things that the state's doing. We get updates on all the bills that concern our cities. With that, I have nothing else.
Great, thank you. We have Vice Mayor Harris.
Busy two weeks for all of us, it sounds like. I also am going to tone down my stuff a little bit. I did attend three events for the Yuba-Sutter Arts, my role on their board over there. They continue to do an outstanding job in the community. Just look at the paper every day, and they're always listing their activities down there, helping everybody out. One of the highlights, there are the two main highlights, the Peace Officer Memorial at Yuba City PD out in front there. Very touching, very poignant event. Once a year isn't often enough to be so formal about it personally. However, to have been there and to deliberately take some time to pause and remember the sacrifices those officers made for all of us was very meaningful. And I was happy to be there. On those same lines, Grateful Nation Remembers program at the church out here on Calusa Highway. If anybody's not ever attended that, I highly, highly recommend that. I guarantee you, if you don't shed at least one tear, you're not human because they do an outstanding, outstanding job out there, and it's a wonderful program. The, on a lighter note, but quite fun, I attended the Punjabi Heritage Festival at the fairgrounds. Good food, good music, good people. It was a fun time. Continue to do my work and my role out there at Beale Air Force Base. Talking, continuing relationships with folks out there, their commander and the, my assigned commander there at the Civil Engineering Squadron. And Memorial Day ceremony at Sutter Cemetery. Always a good time, if you can call it that, out there at the cemetery. Some more chatting with Civil Air Patrol out there and the commander out at Beale, the new commander, Andy Clark. So they always do a good job, and I'm proud to be out there with them. So at that, I will nip it and move on.
Great, thank you. And for just updates on some of the stuff that I've been working on, you've probably noticed some of the shirts here. The summer at City Hall is beginning on Monday, June the 11th. We have 26 students enrolled. We did have 30. Couple of students are having to take some summer school because they didn't have some of the grades that we are expecting. So they will be making up other courses during the summer. So we have 26 students in the program, and we are very, very excited. Just put the final touches on that. The students will be involved here at City Hall for three weeks. And at the end, just if you want to jot this down, it's open to the public, but they will conduct a mock city council meeting right here on Thursday, June 28th, as their final project. And like I said, it's open to the public and it'll take place at 1:00 in the afternoon. And right after that will be their graduation ceremony, where they will be given certifications. And we had the budget session last week, as we had indicated. And we have our new youth commissioners. Aside from that, I think everybody else covered all the meetings, so we are good. I think at the end of June, so I'm doing some prep work right now for the mayor's conference to put some reports together to present at the mayor's conference at the end of June. And I'll give you an update when we're ready for that. Aside from that, I think unless there's anything else, this meeting is now adjourned. Go out and vote if you haven't. You got a few minutes.